Good evening and welcome. I'm Andrea Mullrein. I'm president of the League of Women Voters of Lackawanna County, and I'm delighted that you're here with us this evening for our debate with the candidates for Scranton City Council. There are six candidates with us this evening. They are all Democrats. There are no Republican candidates on the ballot this year for the primary election for Scranton City Council. And we'll get to the introduction of our candidates and to the program in just a minute. First, I'd like to thank the University of Scranton, one of our partners, the Political Science Department. Jeanne Harris is the chair of the Political Science Department. She's here this evening, also a board member and past president of the League of Women Voters of Lackawanna County. Thank you, Jeanne, for co-hosting this debate with us. And also ECTV, our partner that allows us to bring this not only to you here in the audience this evening, but to all the viewers on ECTV Channel 19, and then to anybody who goes to our website and views the debate through YouTube. So, thank you, Mark, for being here with us this evening in ECTV. I'd like to talk a little bit about the League of Women Voters. We are an organization, a grassroots organization. We've been around since 1920, so we have a long history of grassroots activism. We are an organization of both men and women despite our name. The League was formed right after women fought and won the battle for the right to vote, and we've retained our name in deference and in honor of the women who came before us. However, we are now, and have been for many, many years, an organization of both men and women. Tom Welby is one of our board members. He's with us here this evening, as is my husband Larry in the back, so come and join the League. You won't be alone. Excuse me. We welcome all of you to join us. And if you appreciate the work that we do in bringing these things to you, I would suggest the folks in the audience this evening, if you make a contribution on your way out the door, that would help cover our expenses for these types of events. So, we would appreciate that consideration. Some of the other events, this is an incredibly important primary election year for Lackawanna County and for Scranton. Some of the other events that we've conducted and will continue to conduct right now, we had a session on the ballot questions that pertain to all of Lackawanna County. There are five ballot questions this year, four of them that pertain to eliminating row offices in Lackawanna County, and one that pertains to forming a government study commission for Lackawanna County. There are 38 candidates who are running for seven seats on the Home Rule Charter Study Commission if that question passes. I would suggest that you visit our website. I actually have the video with me now, so it'll be posted shortly on our website of the event that we had, and also you can tune into ECTV and learn more about what those ballot questions mean and why they're so important to Lackawanna County. We also conducted a candidate forum with the candidates for the Lackawanna County Register of Will's office, and again, that'll give you some perspective on why those folks feel that that should remain an elected office and give you an opportunity to know who those candidates are. I would also like to thank the Times Tribune. They have implemented an electronic voter guide. I don't know that it's complete yet, but it will be, and they'll also be printing the voter guide in the Times Tribune, so I invite you to look at the resources that they've made available as well. Next week, we have two debates for the mayoral candidates in Scranton. We have a debate on Monday evening with the candidates for the Republican ticket on Scranton Mayor, and on Tuesday evening, we have a debate with the candidates for the Democratic ticket for Scranton Mayor. I'd also like to let you know that there was another debate last night with those candidates hosted by ECTV. You can tune into ECTV to see that. There was another event that was hosted by Temple Hasad. I don't know if that is made available also on ECTV. So, there's a lot of information for you out there so that you can get to know the Scranton mayoral candidates, and I invite you to look at all of those. In this day and age of smartphones, everybody's got a video camera, we've implemented a policy pertaining to using video that belongs to the League of Women Voters. No person, candidate, or political group is allowed to use or edit any media from an LWV-LC event for campaign purposes. Any use of the media requires the express written approval of our League, and the audio or video must be broadcast in its entirety except by legitimate media reporting on events. So, the candidates are welcome to link to the entire debate within their own websites, but they can't cut out clips of it and use it as anything that might smack of an endorsement by the League of Women Voters. We are a nonpartisan organization. We neither support nor oppose any candidate for public office, and that's why we host events like this, so that you, the voters, can get information and make up your minds about who you want to vote for. For tonight, this will be approximately a 90-minute debate. All candidates will answer the same set of questions, and no questions were given to anyone in advance. There will be no opening statements from the candidates. All questions will have a specified time limit allowed, and each candidate will be allowed two one-minute rebuttals at their discretion during the debate. I would ask that you hold your applause until the end of your candidate's closing statement. There are six candidates. We have a lot of questions, and we want to use all of the time that we have to get through as many questions as we can and hopefully finish within around 90 minutes, give or take. The rationale for the questions that we develop, "The League of Women Voters believes that democratic government depends upon the informed and active participation of its citizens. This requires that governmental bodies protect the citizens' right to know by giving adequate notice of proposed actions, holding open meetings, and making public records accessible. In addition, we believe that responsible government should be responsive to the will of the people. It requires integrity and accountability," and we use those guidelines when we're creating questions. Now, I'd like to introduce our candidates for this evening. They are, as I said, seated alphabetically on the stage. So, Greg Evans is our first candidate. Greg is the owner-operator of Whiskey Dick's Tavern, Evans Holding, Real Estate, and co-owner of the City Cafe Mediterranean Restaurant. He's a graduate of West Scranton High School and Lebanon Valley College. He has participated in the Greater Scranton Chamber of Commerce, the Greater Scranton J.C.'s, Power, Scranton Tomorrow, the Trips Park Neighborhood Association, and the West Scranton Hyde Park Neighborhood Watch. Bill William Gahen is a substitute teacher in the Scranton School District. He is a graduate of Scranton High School. He holds a bachelor's degree from the University of Scranton and also a master's degree from the University of Scranton. He's had two years' experience working for the city of Scranton in the Office of Economic and Community Development as an opportunity specialist. Next, we have Joseph Medievich. Joe works since, easy for me to say, since 1988 till now, vax-serve, Sanofi pasteur. He's an Information Solutions Project Leader. He's a graduate of West Scranton High School and holds a Bachelor of Science degree from the University of Scranton. He's a member of the Trips Park Civic Association, the Dixon City Sons of American Legion Squadron 665, a member of the Scranton Parking Authority, and also the West Scranton Black Sheep Organization. Tim Perry is an independent contractor conducting market research. He's a graduate of Scranton Central High with an associate degree in Business Administration from Lackawanna College. He has 20 years' experience in restaurant management for Yum! Brands and Cross Country Ventures. Next, we have Pat Rogan. Pat is a Scranton City Councilman and works as a constituent services representative for U.S. Representative Lou Barletta. He is a graduate of West Scranton High School and is completing his degree in Political Science from the University of Scranton. He is finishing his first term as a city councilman. Joe Wexler has worked at North American Manufacturing as the plant manager from 1994 to the present. He is a graduate of Scranton Central High School and the University of Scranton with a Bachelor of Science. He's been involved in the East Mountain Residents Association, the Lackawanna German-American Society, and the St. John Newman Parish Fundraising Committee, and has served on the Scranton Zoning Board. So, gentlemen, welcome this evening. Thank you for being here with us tonight. We'll get started with the first question. We drew names before we started, and Pat Rogan will answer the first question first, and then we'll move in a round robin as we go through the questions this evening. First, I'd like to start with a job description per the Home Rule Charter. "The mayor and council jointly shall be the governing body of Scranton City Government. The powers of the city government shall be divided among the executive and legislative branches of the city government. Power belonging to one branch of the government shall not be exercised by the other branch except as expressly provided in this charter." Section 203 discusses allocation of certain powers and duties. "All powers and duties of the city government which are legislative in nature shall be exercised and performed by the council. All powers and duties which are executive in nature shall be exercised or performed by the mayor or such other executive officer as the mayor designates. And in the event the nature of any power or duty is uncertain, or the law creating such power or duty requires cooperation between the branches of the city government, the president of city council and the mayor shall fix the responsibility for the exercise of power or the performance of the duty." So, gentlemen, that's where you're headed, is off to city council with that job description. My first question, and you'll have one minute to respond to this. "The gritty reality of being hired by the voters to serve on city council is that it will be a really difficult job. Why do you want this supposedly part-time job paying $12,500 a year?" And I'll ask you about your abilities later, but I want to know, why are you running for this?
Well, first, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters, the University of Scranton, and ECTV for having all of us here today, and as well as everyone who's running for city council that came here to express their opinions. I'm running for city council because I love this city. I've lived in this city my entire life, and we haven't been going down the right track over the past 10, 20, 30 years. We need to have a mayor and a city council that are going to sit down and work together for the betterment of the city of Scranton. I grew up here. I've lived here my entire life. Last year, I just purchased a home in West Scranton, and when I see our neighborhoods changing, they're not changing for the better. They're changing for the worse. I want to stay here, and I want to stop that. I want to make our neighborhood safer, cleaner, and more family-friendly. There are many neighborhoods throughout the city that have vacant homes, they have police issues, and these issues need to be fixed. I'm running, in a nutshell, to improve your quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe, the question to you. Why do you want this part-time job paying $12,500 a year?
My reason for city council is the same reason that I've been involved in my neighborhood association, my community, my whole life. I see that the people in Scranton are hard-working people. They stay involved in their churches, their children's lives, they're active in their schools, and I think that's the same type of hard work that we need to bring to city council, and that is why I am running. I consider myself a committed, hard-working person who will try to get the job done and try to keep constituents informed and try to make Scranton a better place.
Thank you. Greg, the question to you. Why do you want this job?
Yes, again, thank you to everybody for coming out to this. It's really important to have such debates. The reason why I'm running is I'm frustrated, just like most Scrantonians are. I moved back to Scranton in 2007 after being gone away for seven years. I bought my home, opened up my business, and to see the financial planning as is and the lack of cooperation between the government is frustrating. We have a recovery plan that is unrealistic, and we need to put one together that will solve our problems long-term. I have two kids here, and I want to stay here. I want my business to stay here, I want my home to stay here, I want my kids to stay here. I want to be here with my family for the long-term.
Thank you. Bill, why do you want to be a Scranton City Councilman?
Well, I've been asked this question since I announced my candidacy for city council. Why would you want to run for city council? Are you crazy? Everybody has asked me that as I've gone door-to-door, neighborhood-to-neighborhood in this city, and my answer is, I believe in Scranton. I just got engaged to my fiancee, Kelly. We're getting married. We're going to raise a family. We're going to work for the rest of our lives in this city. I've lived here my whole entire life, and I truly believe that the greatest thing a person can do is get involved in public service. The greatest thing you can do is put yourself out there and be selfless, not have an ego, and do what's best for the city of Scranton, and that's what I am committed to do if you elect me to city council. I promise I will be honest. That's the only thing I can promise. I run for this job because I seek to change the city for the better. There's difficult times ahead, but we can do it, and I believe in Scranton, and that is why I run. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Medievich, the question to you. Why do you want to be a councilman?
Andrea, thank you for inviting us here and letting us speak.
Excuse me, Joe. Pull that closer, we can't hear you.
Thank you for inviting us here and allowing us to express our views of why we want to be a city councilman. As a lifelong resident of this city, born and raised here, bought my home here, my daughter was raised here, my wife is from here, I believe that through my leadership skills, my education, my background, my neighborhood participation, that I can make the hard and the right decisions for our city. I'm active in the neighborhoods. I'm active in nonprofit organizations. With my leadership skills, the trust that people put in me, I want to bring people together to solve the problems of our city, so that's why I want the job of Scranton City Councilman.
Thank you. And Tim, finally, the question to you. Why do you want to be a city councilman?
Yeah, that's a really excellent question, and as Bill said, you know, we get that question all the time when we're campaigning and talking to people, and I'm going to be honest, I want the job, and I honestly feel like I have to have the job. I need to be here. The city needs drastically change their approach to politics and government in the city. July 6th of last year, we all remember what happened. The police and the firemen and the rest of the city workers were knocked down to minimum wage, and, you know, as a taxpayer of the city, I don't understand how that happened. How does a city so massive run out of money to pay their employees who protect the city? It was, to me, I thought, a valid question, but every time I asked a question, I didn't get a great answer, and I'll tell you, the answer was years of mismanagement of city funds and the city not being prioritized. You need to do a better job prioritizing. I haven't seen a city plan that I liked yet, and I need to be there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Joe Wexler, you'll answer this next question, and this is one of those one-sentence-only questions, so one sentence for your response. "How many hours a week do you anticipate that you're going to have to put into your city council job?"
Based upon what we've been doing the past couple of weeks, I hope it's not as much as running for city council, which has been about 30 hours a week. I anticipate being an active councilperson, one sentence is about 20.
Okay, thank you. Greg, the same question to you.
I believe it's going to be a full-time job, so easily 30, 40 hours.
Okay. Bill, the question to you.
As much as you can possibly do, that is how much effort I would put into the position.
Joe, the question to you.
I will put in as many hours as needed to get the job done to make our city a better place for all of us.
And Tim, the question to you.
The cell phone's never off, and I'll always be available as the city needs me.
Okay, and Pat?
It's a 24/7 job.
Okay. The next question will talk about your skills. So, wanting the job and having the knowledge, skills, and abilities to do it well are two different things, and let's remember, folks, we're going to be electing three of these people, so there are three open seats that we'll be voting for on city council. So, what can you bring to the group of five, the two incumbents and the two other candidates that are sitting at the table, that will improve the efficiency and the effectiveness of Scranton City Council? And Greg, this question goes to you first, and you've got one minute to respond.
You mentioned knowledge, skills, and ability. As far as knowledge, I attend city council meetings. You can actually see me sitting there, and when I have something to say, I speak it, and I don't speak just to speak for five minutes of fame. I offer solutions. Regarding skills, I'm a small business owner. I have a business background, so I know what it's like to have a budget, to maintain a budget, and if you're aware of my business, I've successfully managed myself through crisis. And thirdly, abilities, I can relate to everybody. I can relate to private, to nonprofit, to blue collar, to white collar. My father was a blue-collar union laborer at Train Corporation, watched his job get shipped out of the country. My mother was a back-to-college, working professional. She works in downtown Scranton. So, holistically, I do have the knowledge, skills, and ability to help everybody and to relate to all the constituents here in Scranton.
Thank you. Bill, the question to you. Knowledge, skills, and abilities that will improve efficiency and effectiveness.
Well, for two years, I worked for the city of Scranton in the Office of Economic and Community Development. I had my finger on the pulse of this city for two years. I worked in city hall. I was the equal opportunity specialist. I was involved on a team that took care of projects such as the Mulberry Street Fire Headquarters renovation project, the Cayuga Park Improvement Project, the Equal Opportunity Training Center Improvement Project, 426 Mulberry Street Improvement Project, which was the old Chamber of Commerce building. I worked for a short time in the First Time Home Buyers Program. I was there at the closings to see these new families coming into the city and finally buying a home. So, I have experience in city government. I've made the relationships necessary in each department to know what's going on in city hall, and that can only translate to success if I'm elected to city council.
Thank you. Joe Medievich, the question to you.
Being a lifelong resident of the city and living here, growing up here, watching what's happening in our community, watching our neighborhoods, you know, fall apart, watching businesses lead the city, I have an understanding of what's going on in this city. My skills as a project leader for Sanofi Pasteur, the largest vaccine manufacturer in the world, I need to get people in a room when we're working on projects. I need to have negotiating skills. I need to bring people together. So, my ability to bring people together is a strong point of mine in which allows me to do this job as Scranton City Councilman.
Thank you. Tim, the question goes to you.
Well, I have 23 years of experience running, operating restaurants in Pennsylvania, Virginia, West Virginia, New York. I've been all over, and my main job as manager would be to take a restaurant that was in the decline and turn it into a productive, profitable restaurant, and I've made a very good career out of doing that, and I need to translate those skills into the city of Scranton and make this city profitable again and more comfortable for everybody to live in.
Thank you. Pat, the question to you.
I've been on city council the last four years. The voters of Scranton know what they're going to get when they elect me for another four years. I have been independent, open-minded, accessible to the residents, and very fair. I have always looked at each issue independently and made the best decision for the taxpayers of Scranton. One of the biggest problems that we have in the city is the lack of cooperation between the two branches of government and within city council. I'm the one member that could speak to that because I've been there. We need to stop that. We need to start meeting, council members need to start meeting prior to meetings, working on amendments together instead of doing them on the floor. We need to change the image of the city, and we need to restore the neighborhoods of the city. Those are the things that we need to do, and I'm definitely the person that could do it because I've been there for the last four years, and you've seen me. You've seen me out in your neighborhoods, at your neighborhood functions, and I always return phone calls to residents, and the Scranton Times even did a piece on me just the other day about how accessible I am in social media, even Facebook and Twitter, my personal pages. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Wexler, the question to you.
I feel that my educational, professional, and community experience has been preparing me to be a city councilman for a long time. On a daily basis, I am a plant manager for a local manufacturing company, and I'm responsible for the budget. I'm responsible for the employment. I'm also responsible for finding new work to keep our company going. While I've been with that company, we've changed our product four times. In the Neighborhood Association, I was president for around 12 years. In that time, the greatest thing that we did was we were able to complete the repair of the East Mountain Road. The East Mountain Road, if you're familiar with it, was a project that we were told was never going to get done, and the only way that we got it done was through cooperation of the city, the state, and the federal government, working together to come up with the funding to fix that road, and I believe my ability to communicate and cooperate with everyone would be my strongest asset.
Thank you. The next question will go to Bill first, and Pat has already mentioned this. We're going to talk about working with the mayor. "The mayor and city council are elected to work in the best interest of the city and its residents. As a councilman, what will you do to ensure that there is a working relationship between our new mayor, remember, we'll have a new mayor for the first time in 12 years, and the city council that enables the city to move forward?" The question to you. You have one minute to respond.
The first thing I would do is leave my ego at the door. Leave it outside city council chambers, because I believe really that's been the problem for the last 40 to 50 years. Nobody is selfless anymore. When we talk about public service, we talk about putting yourself out there for nothing in return, other than the fact that you can do the best that you can do for your city. I think what we need is cooperation. I don't want to be on a city council team with five members that always agrees, that there's always yeses or there's always nos, five ways. I think we need cooperation and compromise. The cornerstone of democracy in this country is dissent, and that's fine, but it's not deadlock, and that's what we've had for too many years in this city. People pander to certain political factions, and they're not really worried about the citizens, they're worried about how they look, and the only thing I would do is to be absolutely selfless, not have an ego, and do what's best for the citizens of Scranton.
Thank you. Joe Medievich, the question to you, please.
Andrea, one of the platforms of my campaign is togetherness. So, in order to get the mayor and city council to work together, we saw that recently last year when the city was at dire straits, when there was $5,000 left in the bank account. So, my goal to get the mayor and the new city council together is to go to a room, check the egos at the door, come up with the issues that we have, look for three, four, or five of the issues that we have out there, agree to solve those, walk out of that room with a plan, then come back together again and tackle three at a time, because no person can tackle 10 things at once. If you take it in small chunks, working together, checking egos at the door, we can get the job done for our city.
Thank you. Tim, the question to you, please.
In government, and not so dissimilar to business, anytime you want to move forward or you have a big decision to tackle, it is about cooperation and it's about building relationships. For too long, we've dealt with a council and a mayor who, for lack of a better word, had no relationship with each other, other than a negative one, and the next council and the next mayor have a lot of work to do to convince the voters of Scranton that there's a relationship foundation that's going to allow them to make those big decisions that's going to take the city forward. So, it's all about building a relationship.
Thank you. Pat, the same question, please.
Yes, I'm very optimistic that with the new mayor and the new council president coming in, that a lot of the old past alliances and bitterness and differences of opinion could finally be swept under the rug, and we could have five members of council and a mayor that could work together to solve the solutions of the city of Scranton. This is something that I've been preaching over the last four years. Unfortunately, colleagues on council and the mayor have not listened. During the period of time when the city was formulating a recovery plan, I have stated in the Scranton Times and on various other news media outlets that what needs to happen is the mayor and all five members of city council need to meet together and work on a cooperative agreement that works for all the taxpayers of Scranton. That hasn't happened, and you see the results of that, the recovery plan that isn't going to work for the city of Scranton. So, absolutely, cooperation is one of the first things that myself and whoever, the other two gentlemen that get elected with me, and our new mayor, to sit down and work on. Thank you.
Thank you. And Joe Wexler, the question to you, please.
I think the first thing we have to realize is that Scranton operates under a strong mayor form of government. The mayor, whoever he or she is, is going to set the agenda for initially on which way the city is going to go. As a council, we are responsible to provide supervision and help with that direction as it's set. Cooperation is most important. The thing that drove me crazy the most about in recent years was the "take a letter, take a letter." If I want to talk to somebody, I'll walk down the hall and knock on the door, or I'll find them out somewhere in public to speak to them. Waiting for letters and responses doesn't solve problems. I think we have to be aggressive and forward and talking to people and coming up with common goals to move our city forward.
Thank you. And Greg, the question to you. How will you ensure there's a working relationship between the mayor and council?
Well, I think everyone here is excited for a new beginning with the mayor and the council. I think we all agree upon that. With that, there are five council members up there that you, the people, elect. We all have unique backgrounds. We all have unique experiences. We're all different, but the one common goal is for the betterment of Scranton, and so we need to come together and cooperate, like everyone said here. We all agree upon that, that we need to work together to turn Scranton back around, you know, to bring it back to where it once was, and we need to go a step further in just cooperation, but collaboration with all the departments across and all the authorities across the board, even though that is an executive level, excuse me, even though that's authorized by the executive branch of government, which is the mayor, we should have an open working relationship with those authorities and departments.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next question. We're going to talk about probably what we're going to talk about for the rest of the evening, financial distress. So, I'm going to start with a little bit of an explanation, and then we'll get into what the question is. There are two levels to Scranton's financial distress. One is a pattern of spending more money than it collects in revenue each fiscal year, which is a structural deficit, and two is the obligation to pay back a large and growing debt. So, I'm going to mention five different revenue sources, and I'm going to ask you to give me a single response to each one of these. We're going to do this in a round robin, and then the next question will allow you to elaborate, okay? So what specific changes are you willing to fight for in your first year on council to increase revenue? I'm going to ask each one of you what you're willing to fight for and give one of the following six answers, or one of the following, not six answers, three answers. You're going to fight for an increase, a decrease, or no change. So it's your answer when I say this revenue source is you're going to fight for an increase, a decrease, or no change. That's all I want you to say to these things and then we're going to come back around after we finish that and let you explain your answers, okay? So the first one, and we're going to start with Joe Madyevich, okay? And Joe, we're going to start with you on all of these, okay? So the first one is real estate tax, increase, decrease, or no change? Increase, decrease, or no change?
Decrease.
Okay. Tim?
No change.
Pat?
Decrease.
Joe?
No change.
Greg?
No change.
And Bill?
No change.
Okay, so that's real estate tax. Joe, Madyevich, we'll start again with you, wage tax, increase, decrease, or no change?
Decrease.
Okay. Tim?
No change.
Pat?
Decrease.
Joe?
Decrease.
Greg?
No change.
And Bill?
No change.
Okay. Next one, mercantile business privilege tax, increase, decrease, or no change? Joe?
Decrease.
Tim?
No change.
Pat?
No change.
Joe Wexler?
No change.
Greg?
No change.
And Bill?
No change.
All right. The next one, Joe Madyevich, real estate transfer tax, increase, decrease, or no change?
Decrease.
Decrease.
Pat?
Decrease.
Joe Wexler?
Decrease.
Greg Evans? Real estate transfer tax?
No change.
And Bill?
No change.
And the last one, the garbage fee, Joe Madyevich?
No change.
Tim?
No change.
No change.
Joe?
No change.
Greg?
No change.
And Bill?
No change.
All right. So now that we've said that, Joe, I'm going to let you start explaining since I made you answer all those questions first. So please discuss the revenue sources we just mentioned or other potential revenue sources you will fight for in your first year on city council. You've got 90 seconds to respond to this one.
Basically, the reason that I said decrease on a number of those items is we need to look to alternate revenue sources. The citizens of Scranton are taxed too much. We need to look to the nonprofits, we need to look to the big businesses, the education institutions, to come together to look at various ways that we can get additional revenue in the city. On the real estate transfer tax, we need to encourage homeownership in the city of Scranton. So when I went to the Greater Scranton Board of Realtors, I proposed with the assistance of my colleagues on city council, if elected, a Realty Transfer Tax Amnesty Week, once a quarter, if we could look at encouraging homeownership in Scranton, and if a home was purchased within a particular week, once a quarter, that we cut a little break on the actual real estate transfer tax, which would encourage people to move into the city. More people we have moving into the city, the better we are for our neighborhoods. From the mercantile tax, our city is made up of small businesses and large businesses. We need to look at alternate revenue sources to keep those here. So with the alternate revenue sources, whether it be fees that we look at imposing for, you know, fire service, accident service, or other public utility fees that we need to look at applying, that could allow us additional revenue to reduce those taxes to make our city a better place.
Thank you. Tim, the question to you, discuss those revenue sources or other potential revenue sources.
Okay. Well, yeah, that's, it was a very good question, it's very broad, and a one-word answer for that was, it was tough to give. But let me, let me talk real quickly about the transfer tax because that one, I kind of deviated from the rest of it, I kind of went to decrease that. Our transfer tax in Scranton is at least twice as high as some of the surrounding areas. So what do we say the biggest problem in Scranton is? We don't have enough people moving in. Well, that is just another factor of why people aren't moving in because they're doubling their transfer, their taxes when they're moving in on that property purchase, which is, we need to find something else to offset that, which would be the increase of properties being bought in the city. Now, the other ones between the realty, the wage, the mercantile, and the garbage fee tax, I voted no change for, or I will vote no change for. And that doesn't mean I'm not taking a position on it. The position I take on it is why aren't we collecting it 100% of the time from 100% of the citizens? The Scranton averages about 90% collection rate on their fees and taxes, which to me tells me if I'm a business owner, one in every 10 customers are leaving your store with product without paying for it. And how are we supposed to tell that to the other nine people who are paying full price for their product? And now we want to, we want to raise the price on them who are paying the price and not telling the other 10% of the people, you have to pay your fair share. So I believe a lot of the city's problems will be solved once we start working on a better collection rate of fees and taxes within the city. I believe it's that simple. We need to buckle down, instead of going after the people that are paying their taxes all the time, we need to go after the people who aren't paying them.
Okay, thank you. Pat Rogan, the question to you, discuss revenue sources that we mentioned or other potential revenue sources.
The city of Scranton certainly cannot tax itself out of our problem. That has been the mistake past elected officials have made over the last few decades. Taxes aren't the answer to the problem, they are the problem. If you look, if you go throughout the city of Scranton, there are two taxes that really hurt the people. Number one is the wage tax. It hurts working people such as myself. Number two is the property tax. Between the city, the county, and the school district, that hurts working people like myself as well as senior citizens who are on a fixed income. For myself, I work three jobs. For me, it's easy to go out and just work a few hours at one of my jobs to get some extra money to pay my property taxes and to pay my wage taxes. But for senior citizens, they can't do that. They're on a fixed income and we have to look for other ways to fund not only the city but the school district. The realty transfer tax was brought up. Over the last four years, I have worked with members of the Greater Scranton Board of Realtors and I've received their endorsement in this campaign because I'm committed to reducing the realty transfer tax and having a tax break for first-time Scranton homebuyers. If we could have a tax break to lure people into the city of Scranton, we could expand our tax base. So when that person may get a tax break right at the very beginning, but when they're living here for 10, 20, 30 years, and then they have a family here, and that's how we grow. And that's why we need to move forward on these type of proposals. Can I use another minute on this issue?
When you, wait, everybody has to answer first.
Okay, thank you.
So you can, you can take a minute when everyone is finished.
Thank you.
Okay? Joe Wexler, the question to you, discuss revenue sources we just mentioned or other potential revenue sources.
The two taxes that I mentioned that I would like to reduce are the wage tax and the realty transfer tax. And the reason that I focused on those was because if we get more people living in the city, the other taxes, collections will go up just because more people are here. The wage tax to me is a psychological problem and a financial problem for the city. The first thing anybody tells you when they talk about Scranton is I'll never live there because the wage tax is too high. And what they fail to realize is a portion of that also belongs to the school district that makes us too high. In terms of the realty transfer tax, if we lower the tax and we're able to sell more homes, bring in the same amount of money or more. More people living in the city means more money and it'll help us increase our finances.
Okay, thank you. Greg, the question to you, please discuss the revenue sources we mentioned or other potential revenue sources.
I said no change to all of them, real simply because you can't ask for a decrease when we're in the debt we are, and you can't increase because our taxes are so much higher than outside areas. The answer is long-term solution and that's economic development. That's the answer. We need to attract industry, which brings jobs. We bring jobs, we bring in residents, we bring in homeowners. We increase our tax base, not our tax burden. Some other options for revenue, one that is, I think, sorely missed in Scranton because we are such a cultural center of Northeast PA is tourism. We rely on the county for our tourism, but we don't, we don't proactively seek that ourselves. We just saw a great influx of money with the office wrap party. I know my business alone doubled in one day, just from one day, one party. So there's a huge opportunity for tourism in Scranton. We're sitting, we're sitting on so much culture. We have, it's the Scranton Cultural Center, we have, we have shops, we have, we have movie theaters, we have baseball, we have semi-pro football teams. We have so much to offer and we're not, we're not taking advantage of it. And so we're just sitting on money, we're leaving money on the table. We need to take advantage of all those opportunities.
Thank you. And Bill, the question finally to you, discuss the revenue sources we mentioned or other potential revenue sources.
Yes, I said no change for everything because I believe at this point in our city's financial state, it's a bit delusional to say that we can lower anything or raise anything because in my opinion, we really don't know the true state of the city, which is why I would immediately advocate for a five-year strategic business plan. Where are we today? Where do we want to be in five years? How much does government cost today? How much will government cost in five years? We don't know that. We don't have any real market data values. We don't have real numbers. We can't make real projections in the budget. You know, everything is, you know, kind of bogus, they're not real numbers. They say we're going to collect $2 million, but we never even get close to that. So before we talk about raising taxes or lowering taxes, I think we need to get a grasp on a plan, a plan for the city. As for revenue sources, I think we need to make sure that everyone pays their taxes. As Tim said earlier, about 10% of the people in the city don't pay their taxes. So before we talk about lowering or raising anything, we need to make sure we collect everything that's currently out there.
Okay, thank you. Tim, you'll answer the next question. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, thank you. Thanks, Gene.
Thank you. I wanted to use one of my rebuttals to speak a little more about the realty transfer tax. Just last December, I purchased a home in the city of Scranton. And as any first-time homebuyer knows, it's a very expensive process between closing costs or down payment, and the one thing that most people don't factor in is the realty transfer tax. And when becoming a first-time homebuyer in the city of Scranton where the average incomes are in the twenties and thirties of thousands of dollars per household, it takes a long time to save up enough money to purchase a home. We need to encourage homeownership in the city, we need to encourage renters to become owners, and we need to encourage those from outside of the city to move into the city. If we could do that by having a tax break for first-time homebuyers in the city of Scranton, we could, we could generate additional revenue in the long run because we will have that increased tax base. And the worst part about the transfer tax, you can't even write that off on your federal taxes as you do your traditional property tax. So it really is a burden on Scranton's first-time homebuyers.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right. Then we will move on. Tim, you'll answer the next question first. Still talking about the financial issues with the city, now we want to move on to spending cuts. Most of the city's operating budget, 79%, is spent on providing services. In addition to increasing revenue, spending cuts must also be considered to eliminate deficit spending. In this year's operating budget, police and fire account for 64%, with 99% of those dollars paying for salary and benefits. 16% of the operating budget is spent on the Department of Public Works, of which 2/3 is spent for salary and benefits. So my question for all of you is what service areas should or could be cut? And what would you do to gain support so they could be implemented? And if not cuts in any of these areas, then where? And you've got 90 seconds for your response.
Thank you. I probably would need 90 minutes to really get everything out here. Well, let me just say first and foremost, the public safety is the most important thing that a city government can provide for its citizens. It's the most needed expenditure that is ever going to be incurred by a city. We need to make sure that we're protected by our police, we need to make sure we're protected from fire, from our firefighters, and we need to make sure that we have DPW services. Now, unfortunately, we've all seen the developments of what happened last year, so in the court cases and the money that we're bound to on the court settlement with the, with the unions. And our hand is really tied there as far as where we're going to make cuts in there. What I would definitely do, day one, would be to ask the union leaders to open up and negotiate for better terms on us. Something that I would never negotiate for would be to, to underman the city. The city manning clause needs to stay the same. We can't afford to have less firemen, we can't afford to have less police officers. I think we could start looking into salaries more. I know I'm not the only person that's sitting at this table that has that same opinion because that's the most important thing. We need to make sure that we have the people, we have to make sure that they're on a pay scale that is more palpable to the citizens. The average person in the city of Scranton makes about $25,000 a year. The average fireman, average police officers are well above that. The average ones actually double that. And it's hard to tell a citizen of Scranton that you're going to be supporting these people and you're going to have to pay more taxes to do that when you're making half as much.
Thank you. Pat, the question to you, what areas should or could be cut?
I would agree with much of what Tim said. Police, the police department and the fire department are by far the most, two important departments of city in the city of Scranton. I firmly believe it's government's duty is to provide public safety. Anything outside of that is extra. As far as savings in those departments goes, I would never vote to cut the manning, but salaries and benefits are on the table, that's where I think we can realize the savings, as was mentioned by Mr. Perry. Also, as your councilman, I have fought and successfully defeated pay increases for attorneys and department heads within the city. Last year, four members of city council, myself excluded, voted to raise your taxes 22%. And in the budget that they formulated, also included pay increases almost in the 30s and 40s percent range for attorneys who are already making more than you and I are making. And I don't think that's right. We need to be reasonable when we're looking to make cuts and we can't be dueling out raises as political favors as has been done over the last few decades.
Thank you. Joe Wexler, the same question to you, what areas could or should be cut?
I think the thing that we have to realize is that city government's main function is to protect us, pick up our garbage, clean our streets, and make sure that our neighborhoods are safe and kept up. To me, the money that's spent on that is well worth it. Anything that does, that doesn't have anything to do with that is eligible for a cut. We have to be more efficient in our management. We have too much repetitive service within the administration, and those are the areas where we need to make the savings that are necessary. Our municipal employees already are at bare bones. As we go through the neighborhoods and we talk to people, we don't have enough inspectors on the streets to protect the neighborhoods. We could, we always could use more staff. The reality is going forward is the union contracts have been signed for the next four years. This council, as we sit here, we won't have an impact on the budget until the 2015 budget. So a lot of things that are going to happen in the next couple months are either going to make it harder for us as council people. I don't think they're going to make it easier for us as council people going forward. And what I would like to do is see as, when the election is settled, I would like the new council people and the new mayor to become actively involved in the budget for 2014, at least as an advisory role.
Thank you. Greg, the question to you.
I agree we have priorities with fire, police, and DPW. I think we all agree that. Nobody wants trash sitting outside their home for four weeks and nobody wants to wait two hours for a police call. So those departments are obviously very valuable. Something that was mentioned prior is open up contracts. I think there is some wiggle room with those contracts. The salaries of some of those, those employees range over double the median income, but we have to, we have to focus on Scranton as a whole. We can't look at special interests when we're coming together at the table. One of the things, on a more positive note, I want to look at empowering groups to lessen the costs. For example, I'm very much involved in the West Grant Neighborhood Watch and I'm very much involved in the Tri-Park Neighborhood Association and we're dedicated, a bunch of volunteers that we don't, we do things out of the goodness and the, just the goodwill of being neighborly and wanting better for the city. And so a possible scenario would be actually empowering these neighborhood groups to take care of the parks. take care of the parks. Something that we can cut a line item maybe out of the budget of the DPW, where just last week, the South Side Neighborhood Watch was spreading mulch in the park. Very simple things that can cut costs.
Thank you. Bill, the same question to you. What can or should be cut?
I think we shouldn't really focus on what we should cut, but how can we be more efficient? Which, in the beginning of the debate, I talked about a five-year strategic business plan, which I believe we need to implement immediately. I would call on our local financial leaders, business people, neighborhood leaders, city government employees, to create this business plan. Where are we now? Where do we want to be in five years? How much does government cost today? How much is government going to cost in five years? Let's start setting goals for ourselves. I disagree in a way with Mr. Rogan about department head salaries. It's difficult to get somebody to be the business administrator who is qualified and competent, who only makes $50,000 or $53,000 a year. I don't agree that they should make exorbitant salaries, but in this day and age, if you want a qualified individual, you need to pay. I would rather see a qualified business administrator run that office as efficiently as possible, be competent and qualified, and put people in the right places in City Hall that can manage the day-to-day operations and make us more efficient. That is the first thing that I would start off with.
Thank you. And Joe Madyevich, finally, the question to you. What areas should or could be cut?
The city of Scranton is responsible for its citizens. We need to provide them with the infrastructure for a nice place to live, for good neighborhoods. We need to provide them with public safety for their homes, their businesses, and their person. Basically, I'm not for cutting any of the services that we provide in the city, but as an employee of the largest vaccine manufacturer in the world, last year, our company cut my pension. I have no more pension working for that company for 26 years. So I think if we can work with the employees of the city and ask them to possibly look at contributing some more towards their pension, towards their health care, towards their coal pay, that may go a long way down the road in not sacrificing services, but looking at the expenses. And the city is borrowing money at very, very high interest rates. So one of my platforms is to get rid of the distressed city label. We've been distressed for too long. We're borrowing money at 9%, 10%, 11%, and we're paying exorbitant fees and putting money in solicitors' pockets. If we can get rid of that distressed city label, we can save money, and we can leave the money in the pockets of the taxpayers, thereby reducing our expenses and allowing us to continue to provide those services to our citizens.
Thank you.
I would like another minute, if you don't mind.
Go right ahead.
I just got, I needed another minute. 90 seconds just wasn't enough to talk about the cuts and the financial status of the city. I know we talked a little bit about the unions, but what I really want to talk about right now is budget writing. I've been writing budgets now for over 15 years, and something that I don't see happening enough with our budgets is accountability. Seems like our budgets get written, and then they kind of just go to the wayside, and by the time May, July, June rolls around, they're kind of blown up and they don't mean much anymore in the city. We need, there's going to be a new mayor. And whoever that new mayor may be, the council, we need to be the watchdogs of that budget. We need to make sure that that mayor is holding that budget accountable for all the money that's being spent. The department heads need to be accountable for their end of the budget. They absolutely 100% do. And if that means a line-by-line evaluation of every item to see if that money is being spent and being spent to the best of their ability, then that's what we have to do.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else want to? No? Okay. Then we'll move on. And Pat, you'll answer this question first. And I know when Joe spoke, he mentioned that the union contracts have been settled now, and it'll be a few years before we do anything. But it's always a big question on people's minds, how are those contracts negotiated? So my question for you is, what is city council's role in negotiating contracts with city employee unions? And then in monitoring contract implementation? So what's the role that you, as councilmen, would, will, or should play in that whole process? And Pat, you've got one minute to respond.
That's a great question. I currently disagree with the way things have been done in the city, where it's all been done by the mayor and the administration. I think the mayor needs to involve two council members, if they're done in private, to stay within the sunshine law, to be involved with these talks. If it's public safety, it would be the chair of the public safety for council to get involved. And we have to work and negotiate with our unions. We saw what happened when the city administration chose to fight unions in court instead of negotiating. The city currently has around $17 million that we have to pay to our public safety unions because of the lack of cooperation when the administration listened to the Pennsylvania Economy League and DCED instead of sitting down and negotiating a good agreement that could have saved the taxpayers a lot of money. And I think council needs to play a bigger role besides just the ratification. We need to play a role in the formulation of the contracts as well.
Thank you. Joe Wexler, the question to you. What is council's role in negotiating contracts and monitoring implementation?
The council's role should be to represent the citizens of Scranton. When a contract is signed, it's not signed with the mayor, it's not signed with city council, it's signed with the city of Scranton. And I think in negotiations, the city should be represented by the mayor and council, either, as Pat said, by two councilpeople or from a consensus that's been reached by all the council, in which direction we want to take the negotiations in. What can we pay? What do we want to attain? What can we get approved on? And negotiations that I've seen, the best ones are where both sides aren't happy. That means you reached a good agreement. I think we have to make sure that the deal is good for whoever, for both parties. And I think that's what council's job is, and that's, council's job for everything that they do should be to represent the citizens.
Thank you. Greg, the question to you.
The role of city council in negotiating contracts is very vital. We are elected just like the mayor's elected. So with that, you put your faith and judgment into us when you elect us, and you know we're here for the right reasons. So with that, you want to make sure that, you don't want to waste your tax dollars in court, okay? We saw what happened with the manning clause and the court order and the settlement. It's outrageous, it's unnecessary, and it's just childish to go back and forth and not deal with things like adults. We don't want to see ourselves in the same situation as Pittsburgh, where they have a booming economy, and yet they're still struggling with legacy costs. So we have to come to the table, and we have to get together and look at the big picture, which is all of Scranton.
Thank you. Bill, the same question to you.
Yes, I believe we need to advocate for compromise. The police and the firemen are citizens of Scranton also. They have a vested interest in the future of our city, just as the rest of us do, and they protect our city. I think we should listen to the unions, listen to the administration, and then make a list of recommendations to submit when they do negotiate. But we have to advocate for cooperation completely by both sides. It's been too long that they've been battling, and the only people that are hurt are the 70,000 people that live in the city.
Thank you. Joe Madyevich, pull that mic in a little bit closer, please. Thank you. The same question to you about negotiating contracts.
The role of a councilman in negotiating contracts is to be the eyes and the ears of the citizens. We need to bring the views of the people forward. Through negotiating, that I do at work on projects, I believe as a member of council with another councilman, as my colleagues up here had said, we can bring views, you know, into the negotiating session. We can voice the concerns of the people. Hopefully, that will be taken into consideration. We have a strong mayor form of government. At the end of the day, the city administration, the mayor, along with the union officials, are the ones that ink the deal. Council ratifies it. But everyone needs a seat at the table. So council needs to be the eyes, the ears, and the voice of the citizens in those negotiation sessions.
Thank you. And Tim, finally, the question to you. What role should city council play?
Well, in two words, we play the watchdog. What we do, what city council is responsible for in negotiation of contracts, is to make sure both sides are being treated fairly, which sounds like, you know, that should be done fairly easy. I mean, treating someone with respect in negotiation and having a good faith in negotiation should be something that's common practice, but it hasn't been common practice, and that's why there's been such a standoff. Like I said before, we need to build relationships, and that just doesn't mean with the mayor, that means with the citizens, that means with the county, that means with the unions. We need to build our relationship back up. But at the end of the day, the city council is the watchdog, and we have to make sure that our expenditures do not oversee our revenues. And that is a big issue, and that's the city council's job.
Okay, thank you. Joe Wexler, this next question will go to you first. You'll have a one-minute response time. So we've talked about the city being distressed. We all know we've been distressed since 1992. We hold the distinction of being the city with the longest history of being distressed in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. We're distressed per state legislation. So my question for you is, Pennsylvania's state government can take actions, including passing legislation, that can make governing a financially distressed city easier or more difficult? What state government action do you think is essential to moving Scranton forward? Again, you have one minute.
I think the best thing that the state could do for the whole state and every city in the state like Scranton would be to give us some help with nonprofits. The nonprofits are not obligated to pay us any money. We ask them for contributions. Some give, some don't. Some we like how much, some not so much. But the city of Scranton is always going to be the place where nonprofits are. We have the schools, we have, some of the hospitals still are nonprofit. And we need to get some assistance from the state to allow us either to provide some type of funding for our costs associated with that, or either allow us to research, perhaps to tax, some of the money-making operations that the nonprofits have.
Okay, thank you. Greg, the question goes to you. What state government action do you think is essential to moving Scranton forward?
Well, the state has failed us in Act 47 already with the arbitration or the, this Pennsylvania Supreme Court ruling that resulted in the settlement with the police and fire unions. So Pennsylvania hasn't been doing much for us. But what they can do, I agree, is property tax reform. The way the property taxes right now with the nonprofits, with over, I think it's over 30% of property in Scranton is nonprofit. So how much money is that we're actually losing? It's quite a bit. And also, with the state of Pennsylvania, I believe, we look at some of the decisions they make. You look at it from a statewide perspective where the Marcellus Shell industry, when they're not taxing them. So we have to look at what the priorities are of the governor, and we have to reach out to our state reps and our senator and really ask them for help.
Okay, thank you. Bill, the question to you. What state government action do you think is essential to moving Scranton forward?
Well, there's a few. Number one, I believe, a few months ago, Senator Blake, along with some other Democratic and Republican leaders in the Senate in the state of Pennsylvania, introduced a bill that would give a $50 million grant to cities like Scranton who are distressed and struggling with that distressed status. I think that would be a big help. I think there is a lack of action in Harrisburg, and we need to advocate as city council and the administration for our leaders in Harrisburg to help us out. The second thing is, there was another bill introduced to overhaul the pension system. As everybody knows, or maybe they don't know, our pension system with our police and our firemen is severely underfunded. It is about to take a huge nosedive, which would negatively impact our city. And there is talks of overhauling that on the state level, and I think we need all the help we can get. But at the same time, we need to start to develop a business plan in the city so that we can figure out where we can be more efficient.
Thank you. Joe Madyevich, the question to you. What state government action do you think is essential to moving Scranton forward?
I believe that our state legislators and the representatives in the Senate need to look at passing an additional 1% on the state sales tax and look at taxing more items with that extra 1% and leave that money in the counties in which the revenue is generated. With that additional funding that we have coming through that 1% sales tax, we can look at decreasing some of the taxes that we currently have on our citizens, which will allow us to increase homeownership, increase businesses, increase labor into our city, which in turn will generate additional revenue, which will allow us to get rid of that distressed city label, borrow money at lower interest rates, and keep money in the taxpayers' pockets and moving our city ahead.
Thank you. Tim Perry, the question to you. What state government action do you think is essential to moving Scranton forward?
Well, there's two that jump right off the table at me. The first one is, where is the state with the 1% county tax that was supposed to be imposed on sales tax? That's something that the city desperately needs. We need that influx of money. We need that 1%. And that, you know, that's been out there for a while now, and I think the state's dragging their feet, and I think they kind of go back and forth on this. And Scranton really needs that money yesterday. The other one is, I think Mr. Wexler hit on it, was nonprofits. I was actually talking to city officials in Gainesville, Georgia. They have similar situation to us. 61% safety cost with their public safety, and they have about one-third nonprofit taking up the property of the city like we do. And they are implementing something with the state level that I've been very in tune to, to see how far they can push that, because the state needs to help us as well. We have a lot of nonprofits out there that we could benefit from.
Thank you. And Pat, finally, the question to you. What state government action do you think is essential to moving Scranton forward?
Two main issues. One is elimination of property taxes to fund school districts. There is a push in Harrisburg to completely eliminate property taxes funding school districts. It has a combination sales tax and some other taxes in there that would eliminate that portion, which would reduce the overall cost of the residents in Scranton's tax bill. And when that happens, that frees up more money for the residents in the city. Somebody who is living on a lower income, they're paying very little in sales tax because they are buying items such as food, medicine, clothes that are nontaxable, and I believe they, excuse me, I believe they should remain nontaxable. I disagree with Senator Blake's bill that would impose the additional 1% sales tax. Anytime an additional tax is imposed on the people of Scranton, that's only going to hurt them. I think what we need to do is tax reform, not increasing new taxes.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the next question, and Greg, you will answer this question first. You'll have one minute to respond. I want to move on now to collaboration. Should Scranton develop collaborative planning and working relationships with other municipal governments in the region? And if yes, what would be city council's role in developing and maintaining those relationships?
There definitely should be collaboration with other areas of the state. We see it already going on with the Bioscience Initiative. There's collaboration holistically to bring the biosciences to the region, which is really great. But collaboration needs to go a little further than just between municipalities. I think we need to collaborate more within our own city. I think we need to see better cooperation with council and the mayor, of course, but we need to go as far as OECD, the Chamber of Commerce. We need to talk to the labor unions, the nonprofits. We need all the work together to really bring industry to this area. Bring industry to the area is the answer to most of our problems. You bring industry, you bring jobs. It's real simple. You bring jobs, you bring money. It all falls from there.
Thank you. Bill, the question goes to you. Please discuss collaboration with other municipal governments in the region.
Yes, I believe there's strength in numbers. The more collaboration you have, the better off you are. I would suggest that whoever is elected to city council, reach out to the outlying boroughs and make sure that we're on the same page with them. And that is one of the first things that I would do. As I said, there is strength in numbers. So whatever problems we have, these boroughs and other municipalities might be having, so we could learn from them and work with them. I think it would only help.
Thank you. Joe Madyevich, the question to you about collaboration.
Collaboration and togetherness. We're all in this together. It's our city, it's our county, it's our region, it's our state. Partnering with the boroughs, partnering with the other government administrations, partnering with the local authorities. Grants can be looked for, grants can be obtained, services can be shared. If we look at sharing services in this city, we see that when we get a big snowstorm, where we work with the City Department of Public Works employees in cooperation with the Police Department, protecting the equipment operators and the sewer authority. We get our streets cleaned in a timely manner. We can look at working with the sewer authority to look for grants out there with the EPA because of this Chesapeake Bay initiative, where we have to protect the Chesapeake Bay with our stormwater system. Agreements with them, cooperation, sharing services, bringing money here that we didn't have before could be a benefit to our entire city, working together.
Thank you. Tim, if you would also respond, talking about collaboration with other municipal governments.
Yeah, again, that seems like another no-brainer. I mean, a strong coalition can do a lot more than one city acting rogue. As Scranton goes, so does Lackawanna County. And as Lackawanna County goes, so does Northeast Pennsylvania. And that's no secret. But I just really don't see enough working together. What we're going to do tomorrow as a city is going to affect our neighbors, and they know that. I think it was proven when we tried to pass a commuter tax. You know, Scranton, you know, we had egg on our face after we tried to pass that. It wasn't effective. We didn't have a collaboration. We didn't have a coalition with the rest of the area. And we need to realize that our decisions affect other people that surround us. And that's why we need to, again, I'm going to keep saying this, we need to build relationships. That's what's going to get us through this.
Thank you. And Pat, if you would please respond and discuss collaboration with other governments.
Yes, I think we absolutely need to collaborate with other governments, and not only with other governments, but with private companies and individuals in the city of Scranton. Two incidents that come to mind that really embarrassed the city and further damaged our image this past year were when legisl- image this past year were when legislation was written up and sent down to city council to increase meter rates without consulting the downtown business community. And the second one is the issue that is currently in the media regarding the food trucks. These issues need to be resolved before legislation is created. You get the two sides together and work out a compromise before it's the headline on the news saying that meter rates are going up in Scranton, which of course didn't happen. Also, one thing I'm going to propose are community town halls throughout the community, different neighborhoods, where we would have federal, state, local governments, private corporations, and individuals there to voice their concerns to the various bodies of government.
Thank you. And Joe Wexler, if you would also please respond and discuss collaboration with other municipal governments.
This is something that should have happened a long time ago. As we've been out and about, everybody that you meet who lives in Dunmore used to live in Scranton. Everybody's a Scrantonian in this area. I think that there's a lot of efficiencies that could be made, especially in purchasing. If we could purchase fuel, if we could purchase salt, even perhaps looking at it if it's legal, even looking at purchasing healthcare as a group. One of the biggest things that we have to have cooperation is not even an outside government, it's the Scranton School District. We sat here tonight talking about finances. Scranton School District actually has a bigger bite on the city of Scranton than the municipal government does. And in that area is where we have to cooperate. When we look at tax increases and things like that, all those should be evaluated together within all the governments.
Thank you. So we have time for one last question before we move on to closing statements. Bill, you will respond to this question first. Other than finances, because as we know, that's what we talked about mostly here this evening, what do you see as a top priority issue for the city of Scranton, and what specific action would you propose city council should take to address it? And you've got one minute to respond.
Number one issue would be our neighborhoods. I know people talk about the development of a neighborhood in downtown, and I believe in that, and I will promote that because I think it's a great thing. But our people live in the neighborhoods, in Manuka, in Southside, in West Granton. We need to make sure that the Office of Economic and Community Development puts money into these neighborhoods. We also need to make sure that we start to fund, when we can, a capital improvements budget. Put money aside for things like sidewalks, streets, paving our streets. Make sure that our neighborhoods are nice places to live. And I think on top of that, that will take care of our blight situation, if you start to build on infrastructure. So as a city councilman, I will make sure that our neighborhoods are safe, clean, and vibrant.
Thank you. Joe Madyevich, the same question. What would be your top priority other than finances, and what action should city council take to address it?
Quality of life in our neighborhoods is an item that needs to be addressed and taken care of in our city. It all starts local. If people are not tight-knit in their local communities, the city itself is not going to prosper. So the problems that we have now in the city is basically you can only pave particular streets, fix particular sidewalks in low to moderate-income areas because of, you know, OECD funding and federal government regulations. Other parts of the city, they get the same amount of traffic. So working with the administration, working with the state legislators and the federal government, we have to come up with a plan to improve the quality of life by improving our neighborhoods, which in turn will make Scranton a better place to live for all of us.
Thank you. Tim, the same question. What is your top priority besides finances, and what specific action should city council take to address it?
Well, I mean, 100% is our communities that we live in, and we spend our days, and our children grow up at. It's our communities. And what city council needs to do is, we need to follow the lead. Actually, Mayor Doherty did an absolutely fantastic job with the downtown. It looks great. There's been plenty of revitalization down there, and we have to take that efforts, and we have to take them to the different parts of the city. And what city council needs to make sure that we're doing is staying diligent and letting the residents know that we care. We need to spend time in those neighborhoods. And we need to make sure that it's easy for families to move in. So many times when we're going door-to-door, and I'm sure I'm not the only person that has heard this, was it's difficult to buy the house across the street. It's difficult to do the remodels to my house across the street, or to rent out a side. Why is the city making it so difficult for people to put their money into their investments and turn a profit? I'm not sure. But we need, the city council needs to make sure that we're doing that correctly.
Thank you. And Pat, the question to you. What, other than finances, what is your top priority, and what should city council do to address it?
I would agree with my colleagues that neighborhood issues and blight are a top issue in this campaign. From going door-to-door, many residents have complained about vacant properties in their community, and some people have complained about vacant lots after the property has been demolished. One of the things I think we need to do is, well, two items, actually. One, we need to look to rehab homes, not always just tear them down. As Tim mentioned, it is very difficult in the city of Scranton to get the proper permits, and you actually have to put up a $10,000 bond to renovate a condemned property in the city of Scranton. We need to make that process easier and more streamlined for investors to come into the city and renovate these properties, and have families in there and taxpayers in there instead of just tearing them down. For the homes that are beyond repair, and they are torn down by the city, after they are torn down, the lot in between, when it becomes city-owned, should be sold to the neighbors, and the neighbors can make that part of their property, and take care of it and make the neighborhood beautiful, instead of letting it sit there and let the grass grow high. So that's my plan to help our neighborhoods.
Thank you. And Joe, the question goes to you. Other than finances, what is your top priority, and what specific action should city council take?
As a neighborhood leader for 20 years, I'm very excited to hear that neighborhoods are the main priority, and that's how it should be. I do not think that this council needs to pass any more laws regarding rental ordinances or inspection codes or anything like that. Right now, we have enough laws on the books for that. What we need to do is to put enough inspectors on the street, working with our police department, to enforce the current laws that are on the books. As Pat said, we're becoming increasingly aware of difficulties with our ordinances in terms of repairing old properties. We have many old homes in our city that without some type of easing of these restrictions can never be repaired, just because of the asbestos in the home, the lead paint, the electrical wiring. We need to focus and work on the laws that we already have in place and make them efficient.
Thank you. Greg, you get the final word on this question. What, other than finances, what is your top priority, and what should city council do to address it?
My top priority, I will reiterate, is economic development. We know the neighborhoods are important. We know the downtown is important. We know quality of life is important. This all comes together under proper economic development. We bring industry, we bring jobs, we bring money. Everything falls into place. We look at Pittsburgh, for example. They were also in Act 47 distressed status, and they're working their way out. They have 33 colleges and universities, and 40% of those, the property there is overtaken by nonprofits too. 70% of their economy was steel at one time, and now it's less than 20. We have a lot of parallels with Pittsburgh, and we need to look at case studies like that, and look down at Bethlehem, how they're recovering as well. But what Pittsburgh did is they had a collaboration of stakeholders, including city leaders, OECD, Chamber of Commerce, universities, and private investment. And they did that by diversifying the industries they were attracting. We have a good start with the biosciences, but we need to look deeper.
Thank you. And that concludes the question and answer for this evening. Yes?
Could I have a rebuttal?
You can.
Okay. I'd just like to add something about priorities. Going door-to-door the past two months, one of the big things that people have talked about is our dysfunction as a government politically. People do not believe in our government leaders anymore. They don't believe in our government, and we need to start to get people to buy in again. And the only way I know how to do that is get people to cooperate and to work together. People know things are tough. They know that we have, the next four, eight, 12 years are going to be very difficult, and we'll go through some dark times. But if all of us up here and all of us on city council, along with whoever the next mayor is, works together and respects one another, then people will start to believe again, and people will start to buy into Scranton. And that's what I'll be committed to as your next city councilman.
Thank you. Anyone else? Greg?
To add to the economic development, we also have to prepare for economic cycles. We have to make sure our decisions are long-term, not short-term. We can't accept grants that have, a two-year grant, and not plan for the five years afterward where we're committed to a salary and benefits and pension. We have to explore all grants, however, but we have to make sure we can afford them after the grant expires. As mentioned before, a capital improvements fund is a huge, is a huge deal. We need to save money. We need to pay as we go. We need to stop borrowing. And like I said before, we need to diversify the industries that we do attract, you know, light manufacturing, advanced manufacturing, tech, biosciences here already, and we just need to continue that effort.
Anyone else? Joe Madyevich.
We have to start talking about tomorrow. We can't talk about the past. Looking forward, we need a 10-year plan. Where I work, I have to prepare a three-year budget for my upcoming project. So this city needs to look out five, 10 years. We've got to start to put money aside. So when that snowstorm hits or that rainy day comes, we have a fund that we can tap into. Because without forward-thinking in this city, we're not going to go anywhere. I'm able to make the right and the hard decisions for our city. So if I'm elected your city councilman, that is my commitment to you.
Anyone else on a rebuttal before we do closing statements? Okay. All right. So thank you, gentlemen, for the answers to the questions. I know that we hurried you along with the one-minute responses, so thank you for that. Pat Rogan should go out and buy a lottery ticket this evening, because we pulled his name twice, once to answer the first question and once to give the first closing statement. So Pat Rogan, you have two minutes for your closing statement.
Thank you. And I would like, once again, like to thank everyone for coming here today to listen to us candidates, and I'd like to thank my colleagues up here for our great debate tonight. For the last four years, I have had the honor to represent the people of Scranton on Scranton City Council. You have seen me in your neighborhoods. I have helped many of you with numerous problems. I have always been a voice for the people, and I've always done what I believe to be right. I'm not somebody that's going to go along to get along with whoever the next mayor is, or whoever the next council president is. I'm always going to keep an open mind, and I'm going to focus on three top issues. The first one being taxes. As was mentioned earlier, the residents of Scranton are overtaxed. They cannot afford to keep paying and paying. We need to look to grow our way out of our current economic problems, not tax our way out. The second issue is blight and issues in our neighborhoods. I think almost every neighborhood in the city of Scranton has that one home that's ruining that block. We need to look to get families moving into that home, to rehab it, use grant money, use city money, whatever it takes to get that one home rehab. Because when that one home is made a little bit nicer, everyone else in the neighborhood starts taking a little more pride in their property. And then property values in the entire neighborhood will increase. That's what we need to do. Third, public safety. I've been a staunch supporter of public safety for our neighborhoods. I firmly believe governments on any level, whether it's federal, local, or state, has to keep people safe. That is our goal. I will never vote to cut the manning in the police or fire departments. We have seen what our great police department has done. When you look on the news and you see the stabbings and shootings and killings that are on the news, generally, they're in our neighbors to the south. They're very rarely in the city of Scranton. That's because of the great police force we have here. The fire department in Scranton does a great job also, and they need to be fully funded. We need to keep our firehouses open. Again, I have been honored to represent you on Scranton City Council, and if I'm elected again for another four-year term, I won't let you down. Thank you.
Thank you. That's Pat Rogan. Joe Wexler, you've got two minutes for your closing statement.
I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting this debate together tonight. I'm sure it was very informative. And I'd also like to thank fellow council candidates here for staying focused on the issues and keeping it positive. I think no matter who of us is successful in winning, I think you're already going to be able to see there is going to be a change on a city council. We've been running around together for about four months, and it's always been positive. Everybody's been focused on making things better. I don't know if you realize this or not, but as we sit here tonight in downtown Scranton, there's four buildings that are being done over into apartments. As you drive around the city, every weekend and every night, the baseball and soccer fields are full of young families. Despite our financial problems, Scranton is a very vibrant city. And as I look at it, the people of Scranton and the associations and groups that are in the city, they work. We attended the benefit Saturday for a friend of mine who had a medical problem, and over 700 people showed up, and we raised over $10,000 for her medical insurance. That's not from a dying city. That's not from a city that's giving up hope. The problem is with our government. Our government does not work together. Our government forgot where they came from. Before, we talked about what can we bring to city council. I feel that I look at problems with common sense. That's what we need. A lot of these problems are math problems. Money comes in, money goes out. It all determines on how you want to bring it in and how you want to put it out. I think my educational, my professional, and my neighborhood experience makes me highly qualified to be a city councilperson. I'd like to have the job. I'd like to work hard for the people. And once again, thank you for having us.
Thank you. That's Joe Wexler. Greg Evans, you've got two minutes for your closing statement.
I'd like to thank everybody for taking part in the democratic process and being here, and the hosts as well, the Women Voters, University of Scranton, the College Democrats and Republicans. You all know who you are. If we want to recover, mayor and city council must work together. This collaboration, however, must extend. As I said before, OECD, the Chamber of Commerce, labor unions, the county, universities, and private investors must create a long-term comprehensive recovery plan with a goal and attainable objectives based on real numbers. Economic development is the real solution for Scranton. If we attract industry to Scranton, then we have jobs. When there are jobs, we increase our tax base and lower our tax burden. Single-family homeownership will grow, which reduces crime and blight. And with increased revenue, we can afford more police and fire protection. My life has given me a fresh perspective. I was born and raised in Scranton. I left for seven years and returned home. My father was a blue-collar union worker for Train Corporation, my mother, a back-to-school college-licensed professional, working downtown Scranton. I worked for a global industry leader. Now I am a small-business owner. I'm involved in neighborhoods. I don't just promise to be. I own my home here. I own my business here, and I have successfully managed and grown my business through its own financial crisis. My commitment to Scranton is to pass budgets based on real numbers. My dedication is to pass a recovery plan based on achievable goals. No more gambling with tax dollars. Let me put my fresh perspective and real solutions to work for Scranton. I am not running for office to begin a political career. It's time for collaboration. It's time for a recovery plan that works. It's time for us to realize our potential as the cultural, economic, and educational center of Northeast Pennsylvania. We deserve the best. Let's improve Scranton together.
Thank you, Greg Evans. Bill Gahin, you've got two minutes for your closing statement.
I'd like to thank Andrea and the League of Women Voters for holding this debate. I'd like to thank everybody in the audience and my colleagues up here. They did a wonderful job. I'd also like to thank everybody who will be watching this on television for being informed. My name is Bill Gahin, and I am running for Scranton City Council. I am running because I believe in this city. Me and my fiancee Kelly are going to raise a family in Scranton. We're going to work in Scranton, and we will, our future is here and always will be. I think the biggest thing we're lacking is cooperation and compromise. We need a city councilman who is fearless, who is selfless, and who has no ego. I will be all three of those things. I will not have an ego. I will be fearless, and I will be selfless. They say that the hottest places in hell are reserved for those who, in times of crisis, preserve their neutrality. We are in a crisis. We cannot be neutral anymore. The only thing I can promise is that I will be honest, as honest as possible, and I will work with everyone. I am committed not to making the political decision, not to making the popular decision, but to making the right decision. So tonight, I humbly and respectfully ask for your vote on May 21st. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill Gahin. Joe Madyevich, you've got two minutes for your closing statement.
Andrea, members of the League, thank you for allowing us this time here to answer these questions, address you, and let you know our views on city and city government. As a lifelong resident of Scranton, an honors graduate of West Granton High School, a graduate of the University of Scranton, an employee of the largest vaccine manufacturer in the world for the last 26 years, I am committed to this city. It's not about me. It's about you. I'm not looking to this job as a stepping stone. I'm here to do the right things for the right reasons. As a Scranton City Councilman, togetherness. We need to bring people together to solve our problems, one problem at a time. We need to come up with a budget that has realistic numbers in it that we can actually achieve. We can't put numbers on paper just to say that we have paper. We need to cooperate with our state We need to cooperate with our state officials, representatives, and the governor's office in order to look at reducing our taxes here in the city by increasing the sales tax so that we can bring additional revenue here. I can and am capable of making the hard and the right decisions. And I'll say it again, the distressed city label needs to go. Whatever we need to do to work with the state legislators to remove that, we need to keep the money in our pocket, not put the money in Pell's pocket. Pell has been in this city too long. They have been costing us money, costing me money, costing you money. I believe in our neighborhoods. I'm a neighborhood guy. I'm a guy that'll roll up my sleeves when the time comes to get the job done. Few weeks back, when people were out doing door-to-door, I was partnering with the neighborhood associations, rolling up my sleeves and cleaning the Lackawanna River. I'm a down-to-earth guy. What you see is what you get. I humbly ask you for your vote on May 21st so that I can move this city ahead because I believe that brighter days are ahead for the city of Scranton.
Thank you, Joe Madyevich. And finally, Tim Perry, you have two minutes for your closing statement.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Andrea. Thank you, League. Thank you, everybody who attended. My colleagues, it's, it's been a great eye-opening experience running for, for public office here in Scranton. I got to meet a lot of great people. I got a, a real, a real handle on, on a lot of the issues. There's a lot of people that, that have difficult decisions to make in their own life, based on some of the decisions we've made as a city. There's a lot of people that are, that might be leaving our city. And it's, it's alarming. It's, it's not easy to see some, some people that are happy and in love with where they live being priced out of their city. And, and unfortunately, my wife and I, you know, that might happen to us someday if, if this happens, we might be priced out of a city that we love. This city has given me and my family so much over my years, from Little League to Legion Ball to high school ball, to, I graduated high school and college in this city. And, and I'm going to make sure that, you know, my business experience, my budget-writing experience, I need to help the city and put these, these things to work for the city. I still, I believe that it's unfair that, that 90% of the people and businesses pay taxes in the city while there's 10% that's outstanding. And it, it shouldn't be. We're, we shouldn't be a government that goes to the 90% of the people that are actively participating and paying their property taxes and business taxes and then asking them for more while they're still not doing anything. I would never, as a city councilman, vote to increase anyone's property tax if there wasn't adequate and enough pressure putting on to people that weren't paying their taxes. I see, I see that as something I would never, never do. So I, I ask you quite humbly and respectfully for your vote on May 21st to help get our city back to where it needs to go. Thank you.
Thank you. How about a round of applause for our candidates? Gentlemen, thank you for being with us here this evening. Also, I want to extend my thanks again to the University of Scranton and to ECTV. Please remember, we're a group of volunteers. Join us, you'll have fun. But if you're, you know, not able to join us, consider making a financial contribution[1750.30]